The City of Manassia is pleased to present video recordings of city council and city committee meetings. Manassia residents and interested parties can get information about city meetings, meeting agendas, and other documents from the city website. Expression of opinions regarding City of Manassia issues or about these broadcasts can be made by contacting the mayor's office (920-967-3608), contacting their city alderman. Contact information appears on the city website. Or by completing the electronic feedback form on the city website. All public portions of the meetings are recorded in entirety and are not edited.
Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Manassia Common Council Meeting to Order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And before we begin tonight, Alderman Sevigny would like to speak.
We're going to ask for a moment of silence. We lost a former colleague, a council member, Mary Ann Malvi. She was outstanding public servant for the city. She cared so much about this community. She took a lot of pride in her short term as an alderman. The thing that I remember best about her was she was the only council member at that time. I was in the gallery and I was very proud of her because I had lost my election and I was sitting in the gallery and they took a vote on the steam utility and she was the only person to vote against it and questioned it and said, "Why are we putting the horse before the cart?" And she was absolutely right. So, thank you, Mary Ann Malvi, for your service to the City of Manassia. Thank you.
If we could have the roll, please?
Alderman Sevigny. Alderman Hammond. Alderman Lewis. Alderman Tom Grady. Alderman Ted Grady. Alderman Rapella. Alderman Nichols. Alderman Eisenach. All are present.
This evening, we have three public hearings. The first one is for an electronic message center at the Manassia Utilities Site at 321 Milwaukee Street. Director Schrader, did you want to share with us about that project?
Certainly. Thank you, Mayor. So what we have here is an electronic message center to be installed on a new monument sign at the Manassia Utilities located at 321 Milwaukee Street. So within the City of Manassia zoning code, sign code, basically any electronic message center within 300 feet of a residential use or district does require a special use permit. So that special use permit does trigger basically a public hearing process where, whereas we notify all the neighbors, we put a posting in the paper as well as a sign out on the terrace to basically allow any other passerbyers to be able to view that. So this sign is basically looking at removing an existing non-conforming pole sign, so we do not allow new pole signs within the City of Manassia, and replacing that with a monument sign with an electronic reader board. This sign did go in front of the City Plant Commission in January. The City Plant Commission did recommend approval of this sign to be located at 321 Milwaukee Street. I will note that it will also require a sign permit. I noticed on the agenda it does not have that. The other condition on the other sign that I will get to in a minute does talk about internal illumination. This property is zoned commercial, or C1 general commercial, so it does not require that restriction of internal illumination. That's why you do not see that secondary condition on this one, whereas you would the next one.
And with that, is there anyone here this evening who wishes to speak on the first special use permit? Seeing no one, we'll call that public hearing to a close. Director Schrader, do you have anything to say about the second permit for 473 Seventh Street?
The only thing I'll add, again, this property is in institutional use within residential zoning classification. So again, that is the justification for allowing that type of signage within that district. It is within also 300 feet of other residential, so it does require the special use permit. This also went to the City Plant Commission. There was no public comment at that point. There were the public notices out to the paper as well as the property owners and a sign placed up front. Similar to, as just kind of noted last time, again, the City Plant Commission did recommend approval with the two conditions of a completed sign permit application prior to the installation and that no internal illumination is allowed on the upper cabinet of this sign. And again, that is because this is a residential zoning classification, which does not allow that, whereas the other sign was a commercial.
Seeing that, is there anyone who wishes to speak on this sign tonight? I was wondering why you were here, Sue. Now it makes sense. Seeing no one wishing to speak, we'll call the public hearing to a close and go on to the third, which is a rezoning request for 1100 Providence Terrace.
Thank you, Mayor. So this property is a smaller lot. It is currently zoned commercial. It is located along Providence Terrace, so if you were kind of going down Manitowoc Road where the fire station is, you took a right there. It's a small lot along the curve that, again, is currently zoned commercial. It's owned by the Redevelopment Authority, or RDA, and they have had it basically listed through a commercial property listing agent as commercial development and C1 general commercial. Throughout a lot of the discussions, we looked at kind of the land use pattern within there. There is single-family housing directly to the south of this lot, and it kind of transitions into that fire station lot. So with that, the RDA started some discussions of whether or not and how we would like to view this property and market this property for sale. So ultimately, they directed staff to move forward with actively rezoning this property from C1 general commercial to R1 single-family residential. We have had, at the RDA level, some interested parties in purchasing it for a single-family resident, but they were on somewhat of a lower end of a cost standpoint. So basically, if this were to be approved, the RDA is planning to still market this lot in-house and have it up on our website, as well as get it in front of a lot of residential builders to see if there's any interest from their aspect to build a new single-family house here. Again, this is a good transition. We did have a public hearing as well on this one at the City Plant Commission level. It was mailed out to the adjoining property owners. It was posted in the paper as well as the sign was placed. There were, I believe, two individuals that actually showed up to the Plant Commission, and they were neighbors within the district that did recommend approval of this classification to residential.
So with that, is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on that, this public hearing this evening? Seeing no one, we'll move on to the report of department head, staff, and consultants. We have minutes in communications to receive this evening. Alderman Sevigny?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like for us to receive Minutes A through K and Communications L through P.
So motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I had a conversation with you earlier today about Item P, and that will be appearing on a future agenda as an action item.
Sure. It was supposed to be listed as an action item, but because there's no urgency to it, we decided we would just put it on the next agenda rather than amending this one.
Thank you.
Seeing no other comments, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? The motion carries. Item F is public comments. We have a few people here who would like to make some comments this evening. If you would like to step up to the microphone and state your name and address, you're welcome to address the council. That's you, Eric. I don't know if anyone pressed the button on that, so if you could... You know, I have to wait for a second as it flashes. And then hit it again, and it should work. There you go. You are on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. My name is Eric Haywood. I'm running for judge here in Winnebago County, Branch 1. I'm running with the endorsement of the current Judge Teresa Basileir, who's retiring. I grew up here in Winnebago County. My wife and I are raising our two daughters here. Growing up, I worked as a mechanic at a bike shop over in Nina, worked for Habitat for Humanity, constructing houses, framing walls, laying flooring, installing roofs. I learned the importance of using the right tool, the right way to find lasting results to fix a problem. After law school at University of Wisconsin, my whole career has been dedicated to public service. First as a prosecutor, working with law enforcement and victims for justice; then as a public defender, representing individuals regardless of wealth, to make sure they were treated fairly and their constitutional rights were protected. As an attorney, I handled over 3,000 cases in court, including hundreds of jury trials, more than 20 jury trials. I was selected to train attorneys in only over 50 legal presentations, including the U.S. Department of Justice selecting me twice to train internationally to developing democracies about jury trials, a cornerstone of our democracy in court process and democracy other places. In my current role, I serve as the Judicial Court Commissioner. I was selected by the six judges to preside over several types of cases, including making community safety decisions. Every felony case, mental health case, child welfare case starts in front of me, and I have to make the community safety decisions in those cases. I'm committed to knowing and following the rule of law, treating everyone fairly, with dignity and respect. My experience comes from, my qualifications come from my experience that I gained with my commitment to public service and serving our community. I'm running for judge here in Winnebago County to keep Winnebago a safe and stable place to raise a family. I'd love to have your vote on February 20th. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Michael Rust, and I am also running for Winnebago County Circuit Court, Branch 1. So Eric and I are both currently court commissioners. Our courtrooms are across the hall from each other, and we're both looking to, you know, essentially, we're both applying for the same job. We just have 50,000 people who get to decide who gets the job. We do have a primary that is coming up on February 20th. I know in, at least in the City of Manassia, there's also a primary for other races, other parts of the county. We're the only thing on the ballot. So hopefully, people will get out and vote. So my background and my reason for running for this position, my entire legal career is about resolving conflicts. And I have come to my career in trying to find new and creative ways to resolve conflicts. For more than 12 years, I have served as a professional neutral, and I believe in the importance of judges being neutral and not coming in with their own personal biases and ruling based off of what they want to see in our community, but instead ruling based off solely on the law and the facts of the case. With my career, I actually left the private practice of law to focus on being a neutral in order to resolve more than 2,000 conflicts for the Winnebago County court system as the director of the Conflict Resolution Center. After that, I was actually selected by the six judges to be the Circuit Court Commissioner for Winnebago County, and so I actually serve in that capacity right now, where I oversee trials, I oversee hearings on family court, as well as every restraining order that's filed in Winnebago County for domestic or harassment issues. And so with my vast history in resolving conflicts and finding new and creative ways to resolve conflicts, taking my next step to run for Winnebago County Circuit Court, Branch 1, I am looking for people's support and their vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else this evening? Seeing no one else, we'll move on to the consent agenda items. Do we have a motion for the common council minutes? Alderman Sevigny?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like for us to approve the common council minutes of 1:15:24.
So motion and a second by Alderman Rapella. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Next is the Manassia Fire Rescue Joint Finance and Personnel Committee recommendations. Do we have a motion for number two? Alderman Sevigny?
Yes, as you can see, Mayor, we are quite busy. At this time, I'd like for us to move forward to recommend, that came from the Nina-Manassia Fire Rescue Joint Personnel Committee, to carry forward $2,512 from the software budget, I can't believe we're reading this number, but 0218 line item carried forward from the 2003 to the 2024 budget.
So motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight zero.
Do we have a motion for item three?
Thank you, Mayor. The Nina-Manassia Fire and Rescue Joint Finance and Personnel Committee also has recommended to both common councils of Nina-Manassia to carry forward $8,000 from the burn building maintenance. It's 1-80-2301-712-025 to cover the purchase of the new windows that were ordered in September and will be delivered in the second quarter of 2024.
So motion and a second by Alderman Grady. Is there any other discussion? Sure.
So they're actually not necessarily just windows. They're like doors and panels and things like that that are custom, and that's why they are taking this long. So, but they should be here soon.
Seeing no other discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight zero.
Do we have a motion for item four? Alderman Sevigny?
The committee also has learned that we need to fill a vacancy because of a resignation, so we'd like to do that and have the approval of the common council no later than March 1st of 2024.
So motion and a second to approve the filling of one vacancy created by a resignation no earlier than March 1st, 2024. Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote?
Motion carries eight zero.
Do we have a motion for item five? Alderman Sevigny?
Thank you, Mayor. I ask the council to be patient with me because it's not actually written in a motion form. So at this time, the committee has recommended approval of the proposal of one mount platform aerial truck that, from Pierce Manufacturing and related equipment, for a cost not to exceed $2,200,000, and to authorize the finance director to review finance options and approve the most advantageous financial options for both cities, up to and including authorization to pre-sign a contract pending council approval to avoid a 1.1% increase. That is a $20,000 savings after 2124.
So motion and a second by Alderman Grady?
I would like, if you could pass the mic down to the chief, explaining this process. A lot of people think you can just go out and buy a fire truck. Well, it takes today almost two to three years, and if we have certain specs, it even takes longer. And it's welcoming that we have a place like Pierce that's near us. So Chief, if you could let us know a little more about the new truck that we're taking on.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. Thank you for letting me speak. And like you had said, the lead time on these trucks now are 36, even up to 48 months from different vendors. So we had shopped around. We went to two different vendors and took them our specs, what we need, how we need the truck configured to go down the roads in our communities and serve our citizens. And we asked them, "Well, off of these drawings, can you build us a truck?" And we had two prices back, and this was the lowest one that met our needs. And the company we were working with, Pierce, did inform us there's going to be a price increase as a 2124, but they let us pre-sign that and gave us basically about two weeks to back out if this doesn't get approved here at council tonight and Nina on Wednesday night, to save that $20,000 for the cost of the truck.
Okay. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight zero.
So don't ever hit a fire truck because your insurance may never cover it.
Next is the Plan Commission Recommendations. Do we have a motion for item six? Alderman Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like to move forward with the special use permit for the electric message center as presented for the Manassia Utilities located at 321 Milwaukee Street, parcel number 1-00380-00, noting that it meets the five criteria outlined in Section 13-11-11B.
And that a completed sign permit, correct? Is that okay to add that to your motion?
Yes.
And that a completed sign permit application and payment be submitted prior to the installation of the new sign?
That's the next motion.
That should be part of...
Oh, that's on this one also?
That one, yes.
It's not in the...
Yeah, it was up there. Is there a second? There's a motion and a second. I'll let you pick who you want the second to be, Bill. Any discussion? Seeing no, did you, okay, seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call
Motion carries eight zero.
Yeah, the contingency should have been on both of them. Is there a motion for item seven? Alderman Grady?
I'll move to council the special use permit for the electric message center as presented for St. Timothy Lutheran Church located at 473 Seventh Street, parcel number 1-005630-00, noting that it meets the five criteria outlined in Section 13-1-11B with the following conditions: A completed sign permit application and payment be submitted prior to the installation of the new sign; and B, no internal illumination of the existing upper cabinet be installed.
Is there a second? So motion and a second by Alderman Eisenach. Any further discussion? Alderman Sevigny?
Thank you, Mayor. Sam, I know that the high school had a time limit. I did have a constituent contact me on two different occasions concerned about the timing of that. I assured her that it would be the same as the high school, that they would be turned off at a specific time. Could you address that?
Correct. So the reason that's not in the motion is that is part of the actual ordinance, that they are turned off between the hours of 9:00 PM and 6:00 AM.
Is there any other discussion?
Sorry, Mayor.
That's okay. Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight zero.
The next segment is the Special Board of Public Works recommendations from this evening. We have two items on there. Do we have a motion for item one? Alderman Sevigny?
Thank you, Mayor. We earlier had a meeting to discuss the Elijah D. Smith Public Library. The community is looking to move this up by a year from our capital improvement budget. And anyways, the first part of this would be that we would recommend that the Elijah D. Smith Public Library be able to be located to the Manassia Market Shopping Center, which is the Plaza by Shopko, and for the city to enter into corresponding lease agreements with the owner, not to exceed $200,000.
As negotiated and approved by the attorney and mayor, apparently.
That's usually the case.
Okay. I'm just asking her if it met all her qualifications. So make sure that ends up in the minutes. So there's a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Alderman Hammond?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say thank you to all the hard work that went into doing this, as we're discussing during the Special Board of Public Works. Just saving this, shifting things around consistently, and being able to expedite this process is exciting, so just wanted to offer those comments.
Stan?
I'm sorry, I've still got to add a little more to this, too. The great thing about this is that Manassia won't be paying for the full thing. We have donors that are stepping up, and they want to step up sooner than later. So for the community to know that, that they're looking to raise, you know, between $5 and maybe $6 million to help us out with this.
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight zero.
Do we have a motion for item two? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Move to approve the Alicia D. Smith-Manassia Public Library Project Request for Proposal for Construction Management at Risk Services.
Is there a second? So motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight zero.
Item I is action items. The first item is the accounts payable and payroll for January 12 through February 1st. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Move to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of January 12 through February 1st, 2024, in the amount of $2,703,248.09.
Is there a second? So motion and a second by Alderman Hammond? Any further discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight zero.
Item two is alcohol operators' applications. We have two that are recommended for denial this evening. I believe Mr. Stanzek is here this evening. If you'd like to state anything to the council before we speak further about it?
Yeah. I had an alcohol operator's permit from the town of Clayton that was classified as a Type A for almost four years, working at Ridgeway VP Gas Station. I got hired as Casey's assistant manager, and I took the class, the seller server, again, and I reapplied for the license, and now I'm being turned down because of a felony that I had from 21 years ago. I was just curious, is there steps I need to take in order to get a license, or what I actually need to do?
Or if you wanted to comment during that, maybe? Angie, do you have anything else to add? I'm sorry, way back in the corner. So we do have the deputy chief here as well, and the police department typically writes these letters.
Okay. As far as if there is anything else you can do at this point, no. Per our guidelines, if there is a felony conviction or a habitual law offender, our guideline number one is a denial and then a deferral to the council. We certainly take into account time and space, but we cannot approve this because of the felony conviction and the numerous offenses dating back to 2003 through 2016. And I believe there are 11... And I believe there are 11 or 12 offenses. Those are just convictions, not to mention other police contacts. So that's why we recommended the denial.
Did you have anything else to add?
Just that I have, have been serving alcohol through an off-premise, off-premise consumption site for four years without having any issues and I actually was helpful with the Winnebago County Sheriff on multiple times and they needed my cameras and came in for other things and asked questions and I feel like I deserve to have a license and I don't know why Manasha doesn't have the same provisions as the Town of Clayton would, but I guess if there's nothing I can do, I really have nothing else to say.
So, so that's a recommendation from the police department?
Yes, sir.
And as you probably know, you can, you can sell as long as there's someone on premise that has a license, but the common council does get to make a decision if they want to approve or deny the license based upon the recommendation from the PD. And I think there is someone that wants to make a motion at this point. And I think there's also someone that wants to abstain. Alderman Nichols?
I will yield to Alderman Eisenach for a moment.
Okay.
I would like to abstain from voting, please, since I hold a current liquor license for my business. Thank you.
Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Following staff recommendations, move to deny alcohol operator's license for the 2023 through 2025 licensing period for Andrew Stanczek.
Is there a second? It's a motion and a second by Alderman Hammond. Is there discussion? Alderman Sevigny?
I'm trying to, you know what, just this computer, I'm telling you. But you know, it used to be that all we had to do is click back and we could go back to the agenda item. Now you have to turn off, turn the whole thing off and then bring it back and I'm just... Your name is Nicholas?
Andrew.
My gosh. Are these, are these the ones? Okay. All right. So basically, you had a felony more than 20 years ago.
Yes.
And you've been somewhat okay other than some misdemeanors.
Yes.
And you are, you are looking not to work at a bar, but you're looking to work at a, at a store, correct?
Yes, for off-premise consumption only.
I don't know, I'm looking at this and thinking to myself, you know, you've, to me, you sound like you made some mistakes, you admitted to them. There's quite a bit, though.
Yes, sir.
But they're usually related to behavior.
Yes, sir.
Can I ask you an interpersonal question? Have you taken any type of support, management, anger management, any of those kind of issues?
Yes, sir.
Can you address that?
Yeah, I actually have gained a lot through, I did probation back then. I also did probation another time, successfully completed. I did cogitate, cognitive thinking, where I think about things, figure out rules, self-talk, things like that, where I can get through things that I didn't necessarily get through easily earlier. The charge from 2003, I was, I was related to my bipolar, I was unmedicated at the time. I am on medications now, seeing a doctor regularly, and my other charges were also kind of lumped together in a situation that I was in where I was making bad decisions. But it hasn't been eight years since I've had any kind of issues and like I said, I have been selling with off-premise consumption with a license for four of those years.
And you said that was with Casey's?
That was with Ridgeway VP in the Town of Clayton. I've been, I was with Casey's for about five months and this is why I was getting a license here. Casey's actually is officially bought out by Circle K, but I am being hired on as the Assistant Manager at Circle K, which is set to open in the first couple of weeks of March.
And which, which one is that, the one in Manasha then?
Yeah, 1492 Appleton Road.
I think, you know, you've probably learned your lesson. After 20 years, we have a judge sitting here and, you know, sometimes you have to look to see if, how they behaved since that time. And I'm on the border here with this. I think to a degree, you're, you know, if someone is convicted of something, are we going to penalize them for the rest of their life and tell them they can't be employed? All that does is create more havoc, in my opinion, over time. Doesn't give a person a, an opportunity to, to move forward. I'll listen to see if any of the other council members have something to say, but unfortunately, in this situation, we're, we're acting as quasi-judges because these are our rules.
Yes, sir.
And, you know, we, we, they're guidelines, basically, to give us the ability if we feel you haven't learned your lesson or not, and we take alcohol-related issues very seriously in the city of Manasha and I will listen to the other members and decide how I should vote.
Alderman Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. I do kind of am on the fence on this, especially the felony charges, that's a long time ago. And it's not like you're a bartender today, you know, selling open consumptions in an establishment. You're, you're selling it through a grocery store or a convenience store or a gas station like that. So it leans me to vote, to allow you, allow you to continue on, but as Alderman Sevigny said, too, I'll listen to what other people say, but I appreciate you coming here this evening. I know it's not easy, especially to get up in front of people you don't even know and talk and, and, and we get to find out, you know, stuff about you that, you know, unfortunate that things happen, but I understand where the police are coming from, that's their job. We as council people put these ordinance and this on them to survey and recommend to us what should be done. But I'll just think about it for a little bit before I do vote, but thank you for coming.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else this evening? Seeing no one else, we'll take a roll call vote. The roll call vote is to deny at this point, so if you vote yes, it is to deny the license. Something like us? There we go. Motion carries.
Motion carries four three with one abstention.
Well, thank you for coming tonight. Unfortunately, the license was denied.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. We do have another license on the agenda. I do not believe that Nicholas is here this evening. Would anyone like to make a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Following the recommendation of staff and probation and parole agents, move to deny Mr. Nicholas Caston an alcohol operator's license for the 23 through 25 licensing period.
Is there a second? It's a motion and a second by Alderman Hammond. If we could have a roll call vote, please? Did I ask Rosita if she wanted to abstain? Okay. For a minute, this isn't the correct one to be voting on. We just want to take a roll call vote. We can just do a roll call vote and instead...
So this is regarding the, to deny the alcohol operator's license for 2023, 2025 for Nicholas Caston. Alderman Sevigny?
Aye.
Alderman Hammond?
Aye.
Alderman Lewis?
Aye.
Alderman Tom Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Ted Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Eisenach?
Abstain.
So you have motion carries to deny seven, one abstention.
So item three is a temporary Class B retailer picnic license for St. Pat's. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Move to approve the temporary Class B retailer or picnic licenses for St. Patrick's Congregation at 324 Nicolay Boulevard, Manasha for Community Fish Fry Dinners from 4:30 to 7:00 PM on February 16th and 23rd, March 1st, 8th, 15th, and 22nd, 2024.
Is there a second? It's a motion and a second. I'm not sure who got the second.
Aye.
Randy?
Correct.
No, whatever, whichever one you pick.
Pick somebody.
Any other discussion? If we, hopefully this time it is happier. If we could have a roll call vote, please? Get that. See, all good.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item four is a Class B and Class B license for Always Beautiful Blossoms LLC, including a provisional license valid for 60 days. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm reading from the memo. Move to approve the Class B and Class B provisional liquor license for Always Beautiful Blooms, doing business as Blossom and Brew Company at 130 Main Street, Suite 1, for February 5th through April 5th, 2024, with the understanding the regular liquor license for the establishment will be provided for the remainder of the 23-24 licensing term when final approval from city inspectors are received, whereupon the entity will surrender the provisional license and be issued the regular license.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's a motion and a second from Alderman Hammond. Any further discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight zero.
Item five is a contract for underground facilities locating. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevigny?
It's been recommended that we go along with the underground facilities locating and marketing services. This is related to the Digger's Hotline with Laser Utility Locating LLC.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? It's going to depend on how many locates we have. No discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight zero.
Item K is ordinances and resolutions. The first is ordinance one regarding rezoning. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Move to approve ordinance one twenty-four and ordinance amending Title 13 of the Code Let's see, this doesn't totally make sense, but I'll keep going. Parcel number seven dash zero zero one one, zero 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 one five dash four from C1 General Commercial District to R1 Single Family, Single Family Residential District.
Is there a second? It's a motion and a second. Discuss, did you have discussion?
Yes, the, could my name be added to the ordinance as presented in the packet?
Sure.
Mine says it's introduced by the City of Manasha Redevelopment Authority.
But you, the word is way up there.
Thank you.
Yeah, because they can't introduce.
I, I am not the, the redevelopment authority. No.
It's all good. Alderman Repella?
Thank you, Mayor. Sam was, I know there was some discussion from the homeowners as far as what type of residence would be available or would be rented or would be utilizing this space. They did not, I mean, their hope was to have a regular, a single-family residence, not like a group home type of setting. Is that something that could be clarified in this or would a group home qualify as a single-family residence?
That would not, I guess, be able to be discussed at this time, so the R1 Single Family Residential District would have to, any use within that district would be allowed as defined by the zoning code. So the, the definition of group home is, is vague, so it's hard to say yes or no, what could or could not be exactly allowed. What I can say is this is still owned by the Redevelopment Authority and I believe their goal is to sell it to the development of a owner-occupied, single-family residential unit. So I would assume that they are going to sell that through a land purchase and development agreement with those conditions, that it would be basically that owner-occupied, single-family unit.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight zero.
Item two is resolution three. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevigny?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like for us to approve R324. This resolution amends the 2024-2025 Capital Improvement Plan, the CIP budget, to allow the city funding for the Elijah D. Smith Public Library renovation project in an amount not to exceed $3 million on the city's part.
It's a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just want to make sure you caught what I said at the end there because otherwise, if I were to read it like that, it would have meant we could have only spent $3 million.
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight zero.
Item N is public comments on any matter that was on the agenda this evening. If there's anyone who wishes to speak, you're welcome to do so now. Seeing no one, if there is a, I would accept a motion to adjourn. It's a motion and a second. All those in favor? We are adjourned, thank you.
The City of Manassia is pleased to present video recordings of city council and city committee meetings. Manassia residents and interested parties can get information about city meetings, meeting agendas, and other documents from the city website, www-manassiawi.gov. Expression of opinions regarding City of Manassia issues or about these broadcasts can be made by contacting the mayor's office, 920-967-3608, contacting their city alderman. Contact information appears on the city website, or by completing the electronic feedback form on the city website. All public portions of the meetings are recorded in entirety and are not edited.